There's something to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was from 1718. Has been a year or so. Many passes.
They do and they don't.
Yeah.
Then the gal.
Isn't that sideways? You can't tell the time? It's jumping over here. Hold on.
Hey, Jim, I'm gonna talk to you. Call order Thursday, October 17th, through the shore school for a special meeting. Roll call please.
Mr. Bringard.
Here.
Mr. Frabel.
Here.
Dr. Peck. This is Stenler.
Here.
This is Stogur. Mr. Swetu.
Yeah.
This is Thomas.
Here.
This is Watson.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Seven members present, two absent.
Right to the plumb division. Plumb division is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We're here this evening to review a proposal to repair the swimming pool. And Mr. Anders, do you have that bid?
Yeah, just quick background information on the bid process. The bid was advertised for three weeks. It was issued on September 26th. Bid deadline was yesterday, October the 16th at 3:00 P.M. Bid opening was this morning here at the admin building at 10:00 A.M. The district only received one bid submission. It received several requests for bid packets, but only one response. That response was received from Boarder Swimming Pools out of Millersburg, Pennsylvania. Total cost of the project submitted was $215,692, 215-692. At this point in time, I will open it up for discussion, conversation with the board.
Could you just give us a quick overview of what the specs were?
Uh. Quick overview of the specs, the two pool main drains, correct me if I'm wrong on any of those, Mr. Wall, please. Two full main drains at the bottom of the deep end of the pool. The pipe that leads from those drains to the filter box is the original pipe to the pool, which is approximately 40 years old, is in total failure. Proposal is to abandon those drains, they're actually going to rip them out, put two new drains in, abandon the current non-existent pipe, and put, insert a new pipe that runs, the drains will be placed approximately at the same location they currently sit. They will meet in the middle of the pool. PVC pipe will head towards the deep end far wall, up the wall approximately eight feet into the crawl space that goes around the pool. And then the pipe will run on basically the surface of the ground that is the crawl space all the way around to the access to the filter box area.
Let me ask you this.
The pool will be, the wall and floor will be cut and then the tile will be replaced.
So you're abandoning the two main drains that are in the deep end right now and replacing them, you're kind of cutting two new main drains?
They're actually going in a different direction than the existing drains. They'll be going back towards the back pole instead of toward the filter pit. Just go back up the wall and out around the pool instead of going straight shot from the drains to the pool.
That's where the pipe will go, the drains themselves, the physical drains at the bottom of the pool will be pretty much place break where the exactly.
Within two feet, yeah.
Existing ones are.
You can't, you just can't cut the, you're gonna have to cut into the concrete anyhow in the bottom, I assume, to put the main drains in and plumb it out. You can't, we'll pay you to just cut the old ones out?
Well, the drains that are in there now, they're actually, they already have welded collars on that go in the direction to the filter pit. And regardless of reusing them or not, they have to be replaced for the Virginia Grand Baker law. They have to be, the specific drains when they're replaced new. And then obviously the piping will be going out the backside instead of the front side or to the left or the right. But we're meeting in the middle with a T and then coming back towards the backside.
Was that the engineering design to do it that way?
Yeah.
Was? This bid's a little higher than what you expected, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yes, the original engineer's estimate was between 100,000 and 200,000.
Nobody else got, other question, the people that I guess asked for bid submits whatever, that did not submit anything, was there some concern that they were concerned about that they could not handle the job or a, what's, no idea why they did not submit a bid?
I don't think it went any further than requesting the bid documents and that was left at that. I never had anybody for a site visit or anything like that.
We did hold a preliminary pre-bid meeting last Tuesday, October the 8th. And no one showed up.
Did they give you a timeframe?
The timeframe for completion, the bid specs were written, said there's a penalty if it's not completed by December the 31st. When I have spoken to the gentleman about it, he feels like that's still a possibility, pending, obviously pending board approval.
This pool's completely drained now?
Yeah.
What's the substantial completion date again, December 31st, is that what you said?
Yes.
Is there anything you could change if we bid the job?
Yeah, anything, excuse me.
Is there anything that could be changed on the design that?
I mean, actually, as the design actually started to get underway, things actually looked better for us because the whole, you know, 120 feet of crawl space at first was gonna need to be excavated and pipe put in there. And it turned out that we had enough room to move everything above the grade, not have to, basically the only thing we have to hand dig now is probably about 12 foot deep by two or three feet wide to ask to be done by hand. But before that was realized, it was looked at as the whole crawl space needed to be dug up. So that's the only thing that was changed since the beginning of this, but changing, changing anything to make a difference in the cause of, I don't see anything with any value.
The old main drain, are those PVC?
It's cast iron.
It's not?
It's cast iron.
Cast iron? How you gonna cap them often?
They'll be basically grounded shut and that'll be, they'll be just, they'll be left in place where they're at. There'll be no need for them.
The one thing I would like to note to the board, I was requested to give an update on the current status of the capital reserve fund, which I put at your seat today. Currently, as it sits today, the capital reserve has just over $611,000. I will tell you, I'm looking at preliminary year-end results for 6/30/19. I believe if the board so decided based on those results that the board would have the ability to transfer funds from, I believe we're running into this surplus, and we would be able to transfer funds from the general fund to the capital reserve fund at minimum to cover the cost of this project.
Well, we weren't intending to take it out of here regardless, right?
We are intending, yes, yes, the intention was to take it out of the capital reserve. I continue to recommend that, but I believe you could have, you will have the ability to transfer some funds from general fund into capital reserve.
So you maintain about a $600,000 balance in the capital projects fund? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that, yeah.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of that because we took money out of the general, out of the reserve in order to balance the budget this year. We took $300,000 of another?
Well, that was a budgetary, yes, for the 1920, yeah, yes. There's a budgetary deficit.
So, yeah, personal preference would be to, as much as we can, you know, put that back in.
Understand how to operate funds.
I just have another question, I mean, I'm not totally sold on what's going on here, knowing how cast iron works and how you gotta plug it off and why you have to cut two main drains, but this pool has been empty since the beginning of school?
Uh, we emptied it before school was out, yes. We actually had, we looked at a couple of different options before getting to this point. Yes, it's been empty since school was built.
So more or less the phys ed classes, whoever uses the pool has been getting along fine without it so far? Been able to implement different, I guess, courses to, instead of using swim area?
Usually the pool, usually, usually the pool wasn't used pretty much for the first nine weeks because they're outside. I mean, in the history that I have, it isn't used a lot the first nine weeks, except for maybe open swim and stuff for swimming. Yeah, swimming's been coming up.
Yeah, like right now, it's starting to get, it's starting to get to be used pretty heavily.
But I, and again, I hate to, I gotta get going, but in other words, the two main drains that are there, in the deep end, or more or less the piping goes through the shallow end, that direction?
No, it doesn't.
Now?
Great before it goes to the shallow end, there's a leftover to the mechanical room. And that's, to do it, if we would, if we would cut that section before, it'd actually be a lot more work because it'll all be in the pool area at that point. The shortest route now, the only one, maybe three feet from the edge of the wall, through the wall and everything else is, it's not cosmetic work at that point, it's basically plumbing work once it's through the wall. So they're gonna cut up a 21 foot by three foot wide hole in where the drains are now, and all that'll be dismantled, removed, new plumbing will be put in, re-grounded, concrete floated off and a new tile will match the existing tile on the pool floor. So as far as the third construction part of it in the pool area, the way that this is designed would be most likely to be.
So in other words, the two, the two main drains are now more or less gonna be cut out with the whole area and then they're gonna be replaced with two new ones. So the two main drains are not gonna stay there?
No, they're very close to sitting.
I understand now. Kind of have a pause before.
The pool floor in that location is actually the lowest point, it's like 11 foot six inches, and it might be 11 foot four inches, six feet from that, but ultimately the drains are the lowest point of the pool and that's kind of where they have to be.
Here's the, here's the diagram of the bid specs. So those are the two drains, they're coming together and then they're heading towards the end wall.
I understand now what you're saying, I knew they're going out the deep end wall that way, sure they're going around it, but I didn't, I didn't understand that you were gonna cut the whole area out, take the old existing main drains out and then replace them with two, two new ones in that same area, you're cutting down every ground or cement and whatever you have to do to the whole area.
One of the questions I have is, when we went, when we started to have discussions about what needed to be done to the pool, which was a while back, so forgive me, I don't know the exact numbers, but they were, they came in around $500,000, correct? My question, Mr. Wall, is, does this help to alleviate some of the repairs or is this on top of what's gonna be called for?
Unfortunately, in any, the last two feasibility studies that have been done in the last 15 years, this particular, these drains are not one in one. And one of the reason probably why is because they were never inspected because the pool is always full of water, the only way to get an eye on them is to have the pool empty. That's why when the pool was empty, we took a new plug out of them.
So we still have an additional $500,000?
Yeah, this doesn't affect that.
Expected to get back to full operation, what's the urgency on that?
That, it all depends on how we would decide to do it, I mean, it could be phases to do it, everything doesn't need to be done all at one time, obviously. But it's, in the feasibility study, it's pretty much laid out the priority pieces that would need to be replaced first and then bring one to last. But as far as, I mean, the mechanical and the functions of the pool, everything is in good operating order at this time. So that's, you know, we even talked to the engineer when he was there to get, to get his opinion on everything besides the drain that he was looking at. You know, basically, is it feasible to go through all of this? Absolutely, because to replace what we have is not even a question.
The other question I wanted to ask was, where is the foundation on their grant that they were trying to get for the pool? They didn't receive any money for that pool.
But did she reapply for this year?
Not yet.
That doesn't come out till December or later.
Right. And she will.
Yeah, I know.
Continue to work on it.
Because I encouraged her to.
If anybody's interested in working on that grant, I'm sure it's, it's her.
Oh, I know, she knows, she knows her stuff. And it's probably very similar to what she would have had last year, she just has to update anything to it. And most often in that, you don't tend to get your first round.
Well, the biggest issue with the grant the last time was the amount of community use. And we did emphasize the community use that we currently have. But if those upgrades were made to the pool, we would be able to offer it more than what we are now. So that grant specifically that we continue to go after, the largest component of that in order to get the grant is to have continual community use on a weekly basis.
Maybe the Y still uses it, right? So that's a, that's a community piece, okay.
Sorry, if I heard you right, Kelly, there's additional repairs that need to be made besides this?
It was on the, it was on the, it's on the capital project schedule. You know, when you look at, review the capital project schedule, there are, yes.
In the amount of $500,000, basically?
It's a little more than $500,000.
So you're talking 700, 750,000 to repair that pool?
Plus.
I had hoped that maybe this, this kind of addressed some of the issues that were, that were there, and that was a big question I had.
That would be a renovation to the pool, I mean, that would be totally regloned to a certain extent.
And I think at one point, didn't we discuss breaking that down into manageable pieces and prioritizing, I think you guys did that, correct? Because of what you're saying, it's not, it doesn't have to all be done at one time.
Yeah, I did that for, who do we have as well? She found the one pieces were really important to get in.
Any other questions? We hired a, we've hired a pool engineer to come in and do an analysis and give us We hired a, we've hired a pool engineer to come in and do an analysis and give us a recommended solution to the problem, right?
And that was, that's the design of the pool project there, Marle, on the paper.
Yeah, I'll finish.
You have an, we had the design, and that was done by an architect.
May I finish my?
With you.
So we hired a professional engineer, pool engineer, to come in and help us out and make a recommendation. And I briefly looked at the specifications, and I also looked at the drawing, and I thought that, that looked that he's, like he had done a professional job. Do you feel that in this process, for me, the bid specifications for the project as designed and outlined by the pool engineer?
Yes.
You know, I, I just, I'm gonna make a comment, you know, for, to, to repair this and then to repair the other five hundred thousand, you look at a seven hundred, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars plus the, we had discussed the cost of running that pool per year way back, and that's very, very expensive, and Adrian Craig could not come up with a real number, I don't believe. I mean, you're talking a lot of money here, I don't know if we'll pay to, to me, I'm gonna vote no, I don't know if we'll pay to hold this off a little bit and look at the overall picture of, of this pool. I mean, I, you're, you're, you're probably talking seven fifty, and I would imagine another two fifty operational fees throughout the year. That's a lot of money, when you state that we are in. These projects that you're anticipating, what are they? Do you have some idea what they are, and, yeah, what are they?
A lot of it is the de-.
Five hundred thousand.
The de-ventification system, that, that cold piece of space in the pool, that's a big one. There's gutter drains in there, the floor drains go around, the floor pick up the water from the kids' floor splashing up over the pool, they could be replaced in the next five years. Those pumps, piping, and the mechanical room, they should, I mean, everything in the, everything that's being used in there is essentially thirty-five years old. So that's all, all beyond its life expectancy, so at some point, if we continue to have a desire to have an auditorium, we're gonna have to put the funds and time into it to keep it going.
Have you had, have you had somebody come in and, and do a study, actually a pool expert, come in and look at the pool, and, and then identify, you know, what, what maintenance or what, what has to be replaced, uh, over a period of time?
The last time I had a feasibility study on the pool was, I think, three years ago.
Three years ago? And, uh, as a result of that, well, there's, there were specific projects, or run, or maintenance that was identified to be done, but was that put on a time schedule, an estimated time schedule? What kind, what kind of a year, yearly time schedule were we looking at here on some of these projects?
I'm not sure what year we had that in capital projects, it was a few years out. I think it was, yeah, two, one or two years out.
Just one or two years out.
It wasn't real far.
Right.
But then, when we started talking about the grant and all that, all that for the pool, and that kinda looked, looked right.
So when you, when you look at this day-to-day operationally, are you, are you anticipating any problem areas? Say, within the next year, or the following year, or the next three years?
No, I don't believe any major, major problems. I mean, our, the, the biggest piece of the pool is the, the deck on, and I have that annually serviced by an outside vendor that comes in, does a big checklist from top to bottom, wanting to get a, a good clean inspection report every year from it. Anything that does need to be replaced or repaired, that's done at that time. There's no recommendations of, of physically replacing it this year or next year.
Have you considered bringing in an outside person annually to do an updated inspection, like to do, I say, on the fire alarm system? Have you thought about that?
On the full auditorium?
Yeah, do you feel that's necessary or not?
No, I don't think, no, not anywhere at all. We have, our staff has a pretty good handle on the pool, the pool area, the mechanical rooms, this is day-to-day maintenance thing we take care of.
So this, this estimated five hundred thousand, that's strictly an estimate, and you have, you, you don't know when you might need to dip into that. So it's just, it's out there, it's a possibility, it's like, uh, looking ahead here, maybe a five-year maintenance plan or whatever. That doesn't mean that you're gonna have to spend five hundred thousand dollars in the next couple of years. You know, it's, it's a date, it's a year-to-year type assessment.
It's just like any other.
It's like a contingency.
Like any other piece of large equipment that we have, it's at that, of that age, we just, we maintain it, and then that's, that's the end goal, that.
So if we repair the, this problem we have now, put the water back in the pool, anticipate that things are gonna work fine, then you're gonna continue to march and continue your maintenance program, and we'll get the pool back in operation so the kids can use it. Do the phys ed class, during the day, do the phys ed classes use this pool on a regular basis? Is there a lot of student, a lot of student use?
Yeah.
At the pool during the school day?
Especially during the second and third nine weeks.
Yeah.
And then in the fourth nine weeks, a lot of time you have some of the elementary schools come up and use it.
Is it one of our, uh, learning outcomes is to teach every child how to swim? Is that part of the, our learning outcome? Is that in the curriculum?
I can't, I can't guarantee you that that, that particular statement is within, uh, the learning outcomes or the curriculum.
It would not be a state requirement for the, uh, State Association for Athletic PE because most pool districts don't have a pool.
It's, it's basically the intention.
It's not a state requirement.
Oh, okay, but the, the phys ed swimming, is that more for recreation, is that more for exercise? Or, or is there actual learning, the, the teaching kids how to swim that don't know how to swim? Does that, is that part of this physical education?
There's both, there's both.
A little bit of both, okay.
I think there, at one time, I know they even gave kinda lessons on how to get in and out of a canoe, kayaks, and kinda.
That's why, that's why.
General water safety in addition to the swimming.
That's why I said there was both, cause that's the normal argument, they do both.
If they do like a lifeguard class, they have kayak community.
So then, as far as the community use, um, is there a lot of community use?
We, uh...
I mean, say, is it used by the community on a weekly basis? Say, after hours?
Usually the community has, the community swims in the winter time on Saturdays, there's usually anywhere from thirty to fifty-five, sixty people there on a Saturday afternoon.
And it's, it's by five times throughout the year.
Every week, period of time.
No, not every week.
No, not every week.
It's five times across the winter, uh, five dates across the winter, basically, um, that it's utilized by the, um, borough. Um, and we would like to increase that, but...
You'd like to increase the community use?
We would, uh, because that will help us, uh, in our efforts to obtain a grant to have these other repairs done.
Okay, so if we'd open it up to the community, and it, there would be more community use right away? If it, is, is it like, it's a restricted community use thing right now?
Right now.
Why now? It's not, it's not open, like, there, there?
No, they're not open community swims, if that's what you're asking for.
We had community swims, swims at one time, but I felt that it was stopped because of the expense and the trouble of having lifeguards there for that. So that was an, an effort already tried, and it kind of failed.
And you had to hire a pool manager, too.
On a weekly basis, I don't think it really had a lot of utilization. You know, the, the five times, you might have thirty or forty people coming in, but if you had it on, like, every week, you only had like ten people showing up, and you were paying for the price of lifeguard and operation costs.
So, so the outside use, that would come under the facilities' use policy? And there'd be a contract, and then there'd be a rental fee, and there'd be a fee for the lifeguard, and so forth and so on?
Yes, and right now, the, uh, borough is struggling, um, with the minimal fee, uh, that they are required, um, to pay to the district to have those five events that they had on Saturdays. Those are in question right now from, uh, the borough.
Okay, and the other user, big user, of course, is our swim team, right? There's boys and girls.
There's our swim team and the Y.
What?
And the Y. And the Y and the swim team.
The, the varsity, the, the swimming, our swimming team, I, I, I'm gonna get it. Is that, you, from the first day of school all through the school year, is it, do they use that, they practice in the pool?
For the swim team?
Yeah.
No, typically, the swim team will start up here later in fall.
Oh, they don't, they start later in the fall?
Yes.
But then we have, then you have scheduled meets?
Yes.
During the winter?
Yes, on the way.
Yes, swimming is a winter sport.
Swimming is a winter sport?
Under P I double Y.
Okay.
So if nothing is, is, uh, done here today to move this process forward, all of our meets for the, this school year will need to be away meets, and we would need to make arrangements with either Williamsport High School or Lockayman, Y M C A.
So if we get the repair?
Which will garner us additional travel costs.
If we get this repaired by the thirty-first of December, we won't have, we won't have to contract out, if you will. During the winter months, if we keep our swimming team, and we didn't have our pool, we'd have to contract out to, to another school district, right?
And that will be an additional burden on our swim team members and their families, because that will add travel time to their evenings, yes.
Well, I think we should move forward and repair and get the pool back in operation, and ma, and continue to maintain it for the children and the community.
You want the motion now, or are you waiting for the, for the court to floor for?
Well, I'm gonna, uh, request an addition, uh, recommendation to, uh, move forward with the project, and then put it, uh, but we'll be adding that after courtesy of the floor and creating a miscellaneous, either miscellaneous or building grounds, mine item that was omitted on the original, uh, agenda.
What, I, I guess for my two cents is, I, I'm not against repairing the pool, I don't like the way we're gonna pay for it, but I think that we have several big projects, our track needs resurfaced, we have so, we should be wrapping probably all of these projects into one bond that we float to take care of this headache, ongoing headaches, rather than to plead our capital projects fund, which we need for other, I mean, that list is very long, capital projects. So that, that's why I would not support going this route right now. I, I think this is, we have several of these, let's, let's take care of them all at once, rather than run out of money in our capital projects and then be issuing a bond for, you know, less, so that's just my take on it.
Well, in, in future bonds now, you actually have specific capital items that you would be using that bond for. Where in the future, you might say, well, I wanna issue a bond, but I've already spent all this money, you can't issue a bond just to pay back a, you know, to increase your, your capital, um, you know, with no specific purpose, I believe.
And, and please take note, I didn't mention the tennis courts.
Well, and...
So noted.
Frankly, a couple meetings ago, I made that same suggestion with the bonds, interest rates is low as they are right now. I mean, we, we, you know, got a two hundred dollar, two hundred thousand dollar savings on the one that we just reissued. So, you know, maybe that would be a better option, and look at all of our athletics facilities. Uh, I'm not saying I'd go out there and spend money crazy, but, uh, look at everything when we were, uh, you know, what do we need across the board for athletics? And, and I'm sure we'll, we'll kinda get beaten up over that, uh, but, you know, if you're gonna continue to have, you know, a swim team or a football team, and, you know, the, the soccer, uh, field needs, needs some drainage work, and, um, you know, that, that may be a better way to approach it.
Wait, is, is it possible, Ben, to spend the money to get this project done so our swim team and so forth can start on, but then when we issue the bond, intend to replace that in capital projects with bond issue? Is that possible, so that this project can get rolling, but yet we have an intent to go that direction with it?
Well, I, I'll go back, what you, what we're talking about here now, is like, go back, we're going, talking about a facility study. Bring up, I'll do the study of our facilities and bring it, and come up with our reckoned in. But really, at the, what we're talking about here is like an emergency situation. It was not anticipated, and we have, we have a reserve fund to cover such emergencies, okay? So, so it's something that could happen, and it might happen, but we don't know if it's gonna happen, and, but it did happen. Yeah, I, so I really look at this more as an emergency repair situation.
That's not the question that Chris is asking, he wants to know.
I know it isn't, but I just threw that out.
No, I agree with you, Marle, I agree with you.
But I wanted to make that point, okay?
So the question is, do we have to wait to look at a bond issue for everything? Or can we, can we do this in the anticipation of looking at and, and seeing what our capital projects meeting says we need for the athletics?
Well, this bond thing you're referring to, that, that requires a study. We need to look at everything, you know, and see what we have, what we have to do, and cost it out, and then take it from there. But that's not an emergency, that's not, that's, that's part of the year-to-year capital projects review planning process to include maybe the facility, it's by the, the facility stuff.
Well, it's on the high end of what we normally take out of that fund.
Right.
What's Ben's, Ben?
Mr. Enger, do you have any thoughts?
So I, I, I kinda recently, I talked to Jamie Doyle about that very question, and, uh, I believe the solicitor was, was stating some things, but from what I, the information she's provided me, I believe it's future expenditures, and it's expenditures that are upcoming in a short period, amount, short amount of time, and that short amount of time is probably somewhere between six months and a year. So you would need to be doing a planning, I think, of what you're talking about, if you, and I'll just throw some haphazard projects out. If you're doing a pool, tennis courts, and a track, and you said, I need a half a million dollars, I think you would need to be looking at doing probably all three of those projects inside of, within, starting, I mean, within six months. And having them wrapped up, I believe, within three years.
What would the timeframe be like on the five hundred thousand dollars of the repair of the pool to get that thing back to, to where you don't have those worries of year-to-year whether it's gonna be good?
It'd probably be close to eight to nine months from starting.
So that's within time.
So we could follow in that vein with that, what about other projects like the track? We already had a full report, and we know we did the steam cleaning and the, that top coat spray, but what was that, a five year, was that less than five years?
That's a five year on the paint, and I think we have, we have a budget number to totally redo the track.
And that was up around two hundred thousand, I remember, so, yeah, so that's, we would put that kind of stuff on.
So that's almost shovel-ready, because you've looked at that to the point, I mean, all of these are ready to go, I think. We, we looked at it, we just didn't have money to spend on it. So the track could get done, I mean, they, he could probably name off that they've already looked at, done the studies, and we're ready to go, we just need the money.
And I'm not sure we have to be able necessarily finish it within a year, because it took a lot longer that.
Not with Fanny's point, have to be started, but we have to specify the time.
Arbitrage rules, I think, give you longer than six months, but assuming you could do it six months, you'd certainly be safe.
Cause you'd have to stagger these various projects around the, the competition seasons.
And I would love to re-understand the tennis court issue.
Well, I didn't bring that up.
I know you did bring that, I did.
We renovated, we just renovated one of the tennis courts, we fixed, fixed whatever you wanna call that. We saved about three hundred thousand by doing that, we, we're now it's back in use, maybe that'll be good for five years. We just upgraded, upgraded the track, and that's good for another five years, so we're doing something right here.
Yeah, I mean, we, we seem to be, you know, putting a really good bandaid on, I mean, it's, it looks right.
We're identifying the things that should be done, okay?
I was just thinking.
That's why we have the Capital Projects Committee.
It is.
That's why we have the Capital Projects Process.
It would save us money just so.
To identify capital projects in a timely manner, and review, and keep on top of it. We have a process, we have a good system in place, so I, I, I don't quite, but anyway.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, what it sounds like, you wanna almost have... So, so, what it sounds like, we almost have two motions. One tonight, two, go ahead with the initial costs for pool repairs and then also after that, have a second part of that motion or second motion to ask Mark and Ben to pursue evaluation of all of our athletic facilities and consider a bond to cover those costs. Is that what I'm hearing, I think, generally?
Yeah.
Your capital projects, I think, needs a January.
Yeah.
So, you might have some background for us of that.
Well, I was just thinking, I mean, you can do your motion, but you can direct us to do that and we can certainly work in the next, essentially, two and a half months pulling that list together and have it presented to the Capital Projects. It was an agenda item for that.
The bond rates are probably gonna stay down fairly low, you know?
For a little while.
Nothing crazy happening. You know, they're, they're historic lows now. So, because we, we didn't have that on, under building grounds, can I have a motion to add the repair of the pool and then a second motion to add pursuit of a bond specifically for athletic use? And without specifying which, which items we're gonna look at, just kind of a global and assign that to, to Mark and Ben.
Mr. President, can we just deal with one at a time? I would support, I make the, the first motion, I'd support that. Can we consider one at a time?
He's just talking about adding them to the agenda because we still have to have public participation before the actual vote.
All right. So, move.
Second.
And that's to, and that's to add both?
He said, if you're either, if he wants to take them separate at a time, that's fine.
Yep, yep. Yeah, there's two separate motions that will be broken on independently. So, we have a motion and a second to add both of those items under a building grounds, which will be added below courtesy of the floor so the public has an opportunity to comment. Any other further discussion on those? We've already kinda beat it to death, I think. So, here, anything else to do with those two options right now? Okay. So, here none. All in favor of adding those two agenda items as a building grounds subitem? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, item number one, this pool repair for the immediate repair of the $200,000, $1,500, $692 amount that was presented to us by the according to the specs from the pool design project.
So, move.
Second?
I thought you were going courtesy of the floor first.
No, no, we, sorry, we can't do that until after we have courtesy of the floor. We're sorry. We got ahead of ourselves a little bit. Courtesy of the floor, anyone like to speak on these issues? We're only having one courtesy of the floor tonight, so I'm not gonna...
I can sign up, can I talk though?
Yep, yep. As I said, we're only gonna have one.
I wasn't wanting to talk, but... Jessica Becker, Piatt Township. I currently have two young swimmers in the community, not in the high school, but extremely involved in our youth swimming program through the YMCA and through our rec league. I also officiate through the PIA double A, so I work a lot of the high school meets. Swimming is a thriving sport in Jersey Shore. We have a growing summer league, we have a growing winter league. We partner with the Northern Tier that they come down to swim with us in the winter. I really truly believe that our pool in Jersey Shore could be utilized so much more. So, when I hear about community involvement, I do think there's so much more room for growth. I do hear the number and I'm a financial, financial person myself and I know that number's a hard pill to swallow when you guys are trying to make some, some major decisions on this coming months with schools and things like that. But I'm sitting here with an eleven-year-old at home who keeps calling me because she's dying to know what's happening to the pool. I think part of the reason why the pool is this way is it's gone several years without being maintained. And so, while it seems like a lot right now, but over the course of forty years, there has not been a lot of money put into the pool. The upkeep of the pool has not been there. So, over, if we would've put a couple of dollars here over this decade or that decade, I don't think we would be where we are at. Cast iron pipes, forty years ago, might've been something that was standard, but we've learned our lesson that cast iron pipes and chlorine is not a good combination. We have a fantastic pool guy, you know, Dan is legendary with our swimmers, maintains the pool really well and I really appreciate the communication that Mark has had with our swim team and I know it doesn't seem like there's a big representative here from our swim community, but four o'clock on a Thursday afternoon is not a really good time for a lot of us to be here. Fortunately, my employer was nice to let me out early so I could come. So, I am making myself available. If people do have questions, how to get the community more involved, I would be more than happy to help and serve on that. Any way that we can get that pool used more, I'm involved in so many ways and I know that we have a big swim community that would really be willing to step up and help any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Janice Shireman, meeting two. Wasn't gonna speak, but I don't wanna put a wet blanket on this. I have enjoyed the pool in the past, but I think we should ask a question as why is it that Jersey Shore and Williamsport are the only schools that have pools in the area? And when Torresville was remodeled, they didn't build a pool. When Lockhaven built in the school, they didn't put a pool. Loyalsock doesn't have a pool, Montgomery doesn't have a pool, Watsontown doesn't have a pool. They all knew they couldn't afford it and their outcomes are better than ours. We've got some big decisions to make here and we gotta prioritize what you wanna spend your money on and what you're gonna ask people to pay for. When I went to school, we used the public's pool. We paid money to the borough to use the public pool and the children walked and used the public pool during school hours. Maybe it would be better to pay a little rent to the borough that pool in September and May, instead of going to all this expense. And you know, everyone sitting here, you know your backs are against the wall financially. It's time you realize that.
Thank you. I've been around a long time and I've just witnessed a wonderful discussion and a democratic process that I hadn't seen for a long time in our school. You guys have really worked this over and I make me pride to be a part of this group and see the decision you've come to. You had a reasonable discussion and a reasonable conclusion and I have attended a good many meetings with the Capital Projects, et cetera, et cetera. And I, for one, being my background, know that our school district has maintained enough, kept as betty, as better and better than anybody that I know of. So, nobody can accuse us of not taking care of our facilities and so on. So, I applaud you for the decision you've made. I applaud everybody that's involved in the time you spend on keeping things up to snuff. Thank you.
Mr. Francis? Anyone else? Okay, we'll close courtesy of the floor and move on to building grounds. Motion to address the immediate pool repair. That motion was made originally by Mr. Swaito and Mrs. Thomas. Is that correct, Mrs. Thomas?
Mm-hmm.
That motion still stand for both of you?
Just the pool part.
Just the pool part.
Yeah, just the pool part.
Any other discussion for this point regarding the pool repairs?
Well, I, I just want, did you say if we go ahead and initially pay for this out of capital projects, we can restore that money with the bond? I didn't get answered, you say no or just...
No, he said no.
No.
Okay.
The lawyer said the future, so that would take all the rest of other things we do.
Okay.
Which then means it's not, which then means it's not coming out of the capital. We would do a bond issue, all the things that are in there now.
Yeah, you could roll a $500,000.
What kind of phrase, what kind of phrase, where, what kind of phrase was that?
You have to come out and it's not, okay.
The one thing I was gonna ask regarding, just a minimal recuperation of some of this, is can we revisit the idea of charging for events? Like, charging for swim team, swim meets? We don't do that anymore, do we? Oh, we do?
We pay first.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna say, I thought they did.
No, I mean, charging admission. You guys don't charge admission.
We don't charge admission, no.
Can I talk? We do, they, we use the facilities' use form and we pay first on each based on that.
Right, I'm talking about charging admission to those that come in to watch.
The high school meet now.
Yeah.
So, an admission similar to what the football team does.
What doesn't make sense to me is we have basketball, wrestling and we have swim. There's no reason that someone cannot be in that booth. Our auxiliary person is my time up, sir. To me, it's, it's ludicrous that we have a, a little booth there to collect monies and we're not collecting monies. And, you know, maybe it's not a lot, but at least it, it contributes. And I'm told by other people, I have not gone to many swim meets, but that, that does happen other places. There is collection of, of admission into those things and we're not doing it.
We didn't add that when we added soccer?
I don't, no, we only, we only add, we don't do it for, we do it for wrestling? Do we do it for wrestling and basketball?
Yeah, we charge.
But we don't do it for swim. And I'm not saying it's gonna be a lot.
I don't know if there's anything for baseball either.
Well...
There's not.
And I've mentioned it on, on a lot of occasions that at least pass the hat. I mean, go steal the idea from Little League. You know, and you would probably get a reasonable contribution from the fans that are there.
You might pay for your referee.
Well, and then also, I guess, just, just an awareness or a, a creative process of trying to generate some kind of revenue that can help offset some of these expenses, you know, whatever that is. I, I just, I was taken aback and what got me thinking about it was the other night when we had our presentation on the steam lab and Loyalsock and their Krispy Kreme donut sale. Those little kids raised so much money for that Krispy from that donut sale that they're still utilizing that money to help fund that steam lab down there. And I'm thinking to myself, surely we're resourceful in this district. We can get people to per, to help contribute second mile giving to get some of these things done. And I, I just, I'm just throwing it out there.
And all the other programs we have for youth football, youth wrestling, all these other youth programs we have that the school doesn't fund and they make it on their own. You know, so why couldn't we, as you say, just, you know, offset some of that as well for, for the school-sponsored programs? Any other discussion on the pool repair? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The second motion would be to... Oh, yeah. That will do, yeah. We'll do a roll call on either.
The second one?
No, the first one. We'll do one of both. Mr. Grinberg?
No.
Mr. Frabel?
Yes.
Mrs. Stember?
Yes.
Mr. Swaito?
Yeah.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
Listen, guys, I'm, I'm not being rude, but I have a dinner appointment with the borough tonight and I'm really, really late, so if you excuse me.
I have a soccer appointment.
I know, at four o'clock. I mean, I have to go.
Thanks for coming.
Take, take the second vote or whatever, I... Should we vote on that?
On him leaving?
Everybody in favor?
All we're gonna do is vote on whether to pursue bonds dedicated to our athletic facilities. So, that's, that's the only other item really on the agenda.
You're voting on to secure a bond for it.
Right, to assign, just invest. Assign Mr. Wall and Mr. Ender to investigate the feasibility of what that cost would be and what items would need to be addressed in there. Obviously, the, the five hundred, the additional $500,000 for the pool would be one of them that we would have to do because we've already just spent $200 on it. Why take a chance on, on the rest not, you know, going bad on its own?
We're looking at athletic facilities.
Right, but all the athletic facilities in general.
That's it, yeah.
So, I have a motion to...
So, that you...
We already did, okay.
No, we didn't, no, because he separated them.
I separated the two items.
So, as part of the motion, put together the athletic needs through Mr. Wall and, and Mr., Mr. Ender, bringing it to the Capital Projects in January, but that then forwarded it to the board.
Right, that'd be part of the process. I mean, we're not spending any money on this right now. We're just looking at the activity study. So, given we're not spending any money, we're probably...
You don't. All you need to do is, is if there is a consensus, direct the two people that you've identified to get on it.
Okay, all, I have a motion and a second for that one. So, move.
I second.
Any other discussion? Again, we're not spending any money, we're just doing it interim right now. No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Executive session, we don't have any need for. The motion adjourned. So, so move. Mary, get on top of that.
Hey, Harry.
I already missed cocktail hour.